The United States of America, we are a republic where we stand, one nation under God.
I should say thanks for all coming out on the Veterans Day. We all put a second to appreciate veterans and I didn't have to give a comment, so that's a first. First order of business as always is poll audience.
Are you saying your?
Yeah, so here, just speak your name, address.
My name is Ahmed Saltah, four hundred and fifty number eight. Good evening everyone, my name is Ahmed Saltah. I'm a junior at Simsbury High School and also a proud member of the rugby and wrestling team. I want to talk about why Eid, one of the most important holidays in Islam deserves a place on the school calendar. Eid is a day of joy, family and gratitude for millions of Muslims around the world, including students right here in our schools. It's a sacred celebration that marks the end of a month of fasting and reflection. It's a day spent praying in the morning, visiting loved ones and sharing meals together. But for many Muslim students, this special day is spent on worrying and missing classes and falling behind on schoolwork. Or being marked absent for celebrating your faith. We already recognize holidays like Christmas, Yom Kippur and Kefedah on our school calendars. These are important holidays for many people and Eid is just as meaningful for Muslims. Recognizing it, we feel that our school values inclusivity, fairness and respect for all religions. When students see their cultures and beliefs respected by their schools, they feel more welcome and supported. Taking Eid off will not only allow Muslim students to celebrate freely with their families, but would also teach everyone else in our community about diversity and understanding. We live in a country built on freedom and religion. By adding Eid in the calendar, we live up to that promise ensuring no student has to choose between their education and their faith. So I ask you all, teachers, administrators and classmates, to think about what Eid really means. Recognizing Eid isn't just about a day off, it's about respect, belonging and representation. It's about showing that every student matters. Thank you. My address?
Yep.
You don't have to.
Good evening council members, my name is Yisaf Hamida and I am a sophomore at Simsbury High School. I'm here tonight to speak about the importance of recognizing Eid as a school holiday as well. For Muslims in Simsbury, Eid begins with a religious prayer that is the most essential part of the celebration. This prayer is not optional and is an essential act of worship and a cornerstone of our faith. Yet many students face a difficult choice to rather attend school and miss this prayer or to attend the prayer and fall behind in academics. No student should ever have to choose between their education and their religion. This is more than just a celebration. It represents milestones that every Muslim tries to achieve. Eid al Fitr, Marcy End of Ramadan, a month where Muslims pray, Muslims fast daily to sunrise and sunset for three days. And Eid al Eta celebrates the annual pilgrimage to Mecca where Muslims gather to pray before Islam's holiest monument, the Kaaba. These holidays are deeply spiritual, profoundly meaningful and central to our daily. Several nearby school districts have already taken steps to acknowledge Eid as an official holiday, including South Windsor, Manchester, Waterbury, Milford, Fairfield and Bridgeport. Others, such as Farmington, are currently considering similar measures. Simsbury should not fall behind in recognizing the needs of its diverse student body. While students who celebrate Eid may be excused from school and marked absent, and not marked absent, the burden still remains. They must still make up missed assignments, lessons and exams, adding stress to what should be a joyful and sacred day. Recognizing Eid as a school holiday would remove this unnecessary hardship and affirm the value of inclusivity and our community.
Good evening board of members, my name is Murab Demajid and I'm a junior at Simsbury High School. I've been a proud member of this community for four years. I'm one of the few Muslims at my school and the only Muslim girl on track team. On the Simsbury website, the board says we will recognize and address the biases and inequities that exist within our school system. I'm here tonight to say that not recognizing Eid, one of the most important holidays for Muslims, is an inequity. For Muslim students like me, Eid is a day of joy, faith and family. But every year we're faced with a hard choice to either miss school and fall behind or miss Eid and lose the chance to celebrate with our families. No student should have to choose between their education and their faith. Recognizing Eid on the school calendar would send a powerful message that Simsbury values all of its students equally and that equity and inclusion aren't just words but actions. Other nearby districts, including West Hartford and New Haven, already give students a day off for Eid. If they could do it, so can we. Being part of this community means a lot to me and I hope to see it become even more inclusive for all students. Adding Eid to the calendar would be one small change that makes a big difference in helping every student feel seen, respected and included. Thank you.
I'm Lucas Kazvinsky at Sixty-Eight Cemetery Road. Greetings members of the board and spectators. My name is Lucas Kazvinsky and I'm a junior at Simsbury High School. I'm here today in support of adding Eid as an official holiday and a day off for the district. Aside from religious arguments that my partners gave, leaving Eid off the calendar represents an academic disadvantage for students who practice the holiday. Firstly, parents are presented with the options of either sending their kids to school and missing a time in special moments with them that's holy to the Muslim faith or taking them out of school where they can miss tests, labs, projects or even midterms or finals. In the case of last year, Eid happened to fall during the final season and according to a student from Farmington High School, she had to miss her finals for that day. Simsbury students and families should not be forced to make this difficult choice. Secondly, according to a former attendance worker of Simsbury High School, the days of Eid correlated with a higher absence count than typical. Also according to the same staff member, many families were not aware of the religious exemption available, meaning many students not only missed school but were penalized for spending time with their family on Eid. Members of the board, I urge you all to support the addition of Eid to the school calendar so that students and families do not have to make difficult decisions that limit their faith or academics. And I thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Just wanted to take a quick minute and thank you for coming out and sharing your perspective. An opportunity to meet with Ahmed and Dr. Bachelor last week and sit down and talk through this a little bit. Some of this work and conversation has initiated through our Equity Council, which is our suggestion. We've also had to reach out to community members about other celebrations and religious holidays as well in terms of how to look at this in brutality, so that those will be the first couple steps. I just wanted to share that. We don't do a lot of back and forth in public audience, but you guys did such a great job coming up and sharing. I didn't want to be silent on that. So thank you for coming out. It was great getting an opportunity to talk to you and I look forward to follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Have a good night.
On the agenda, we have a couple minutes from Simsbury High School's Big Game Fishing Club and their shoe drive. Mr. Palinkas is in the corner to lead the supper.
Hi, yeah, my name is David Palinkas. Thanks so much for this opportunity. I am a tech ed teacher at Simsbury High School and we're just going to talk real quickly about asking for your support for our club. It's a new club and we're looking for some funds. Some of our leaderships, student leaders from the club are going to just give you a brief overview of the club, some of our missions and some of our fundraising efforts. We're going to start with Liam, our president.
Hello, my name is Liam Fitzgerald and I'm the president of the fishing club here at Simsbury High. And I just want to share you some of our long-term goals. They include the growing the sport of fishing and teaching proper fishing technique as well as improving our environment while doing so, taking care of our fishing places and leaving them cleaner than the way we got there. Some activities that we plan on doing during the school year include unified fishing where we hopefully will partner with unified sports and unified classes and do an activity with them, teach them how to fish at the SHS pond that people have been working on cleaning up. And some of our environmental conservation goals include cleaning out the SHS pond, attending events such as the Farmington River Cleanup, which is held on the Farmington River up in New Hartford once a year in April, hoping to get some of our members to go out there and help clean up the river before the fly fishing season. We'd like to set up fishing line collection boxes at local fishing places such as Stratton Brook, which there already is a couple, and promote catch and release practices and teach our members how to properly handle fish. And I'm going to pass it on to Mitch Palinkas, vice president.
Yeah, hi, I'm Mitch Palinkas. I'm the vice president of the Big Game Fishing Club. We're a brand new club here at Simsbury High School and we're in need of new supplies such as fishing line, lures and rods. We're currently collecting Jody Warner brand new shoes called the Fun Two Orgue Shoe Drive. Yeah, it's going to be going on to December, through mid-December. And they're putting boxes in every single school in the Simsbury District. We're also putting one downstairs in the town hall.
Hi, my name is Danny Kelly and I recently organized our first official fishing club outing where we raised over forty dollars from our members, of which we have over a hundred. My goal here is to hopefully spread the fishing club not only to us but to the unified classes throughout the school and hopefully coordinate tournaments where we can fish in the Onion Mountain Reservoir where we held our first official event, Stratton Brook and maybe even the pond next to our high school, which leads on to Kylie's point.
Yeah, so we recently had a few members from our club go out to Sweetheart Pond, which is the pond behind our high school, and help remove invasive species, clean up trash so that hopefully, eventually we can clean up the pond so that we're able to fish there and for other recreational activities in our community.
Good evening everyone, my name's Anna Boline.
And I'm Kylie.
We're the social media managers of fishing club. We just wanted to share Instagram with you guys tonight. This is an example of our stats of the Instagram page. We post updates about the club and we're also starting a new thing called Catch of the Month where students can DM us their most appreciated catches and we'll post a highlight for them as well. And if you guys want to follow us now, this is a QR code. But yeah, we're spending our time promoting the club and what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we wait since we knew you all were coming, put a little word out and so to help you get on your way.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Tendall.
Shoes for you.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely get it. Thanks so much. Appreciate your support.
I'm going to take chairman's prerogative a little bit tonight. We're going to do a little differently. Tonight, as you all know, is a little bittersweet, right? We say goodbye to great friends as we say hello to two members of the board. Sharon Thomas, you all know, couldn't be here tonight, but I just want to say, you know, we want to thank her for her service. She's challenged us on a lot of our issues, which is great, right? You want to be challenged on your core issues that either reinforces, right? That you're doing the right thing or gives you the opportunity to change. We appreciate that perspective and our own best in our next endeavors. As we did, we had a little celebration before the meeting. Just a few words on this incredible person to my left here. Served twenty-eight years, twenty-eight years. I mean, that is incredible.
You got a ways to go.
It is truly remarkable and you have all our respect, as you well know. And I just, on behalf of, and everybody's going to get a chance, right? But I think, anybody who's talked to me about this board, one of the first things I say is, I love this board because we leave our party celebration at the door, right? You probably don't know who's an R and a D up here because we have a singular focus and a singular focus is having the best education for our students in this district. And I can think of nobody, nobody who encapsulates that more than Lydia. You know, from welcoming the new members and having their training to maybe, you know, taking a chairman who may be a little bit overwhelmed in those first couple meetings out to lunch to make sure his head is still attached to his body. Your dedication to the Simsbury students and everybody in this room is nothing short of remarkable. And so with that, I get the honor of reading the Simsbury Board of Education proclamation. And that's why I needed to get my glasses out of my car. Whereas Lady Tadon has dedicated twenty-eight years of distinguished selfless services as a valued member of the Simsbury Board of Education from nineteen ninety-seven to twenty twenty-five. And whereas Lady Tadon has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the success and well-being of all students, staff and the entire school community. And whereas Lady Tadon dedicated countless hours to attending meetings, reviewing policy and engaging with the public to ensure that the district's decisions reflect the values and needs of the community. And whereas Lady Tadon has consistently been involved at both the state and federal level, ensuring that each student everywhere has access to excellent and equitable public education governed by high-performing school board leaders and supported by the community. And whereas, the Board of Education and the Simsbury community recognize and deeply appreciate the profound and lasting positive impact of Lady Tadon's service, wisdom and dedication to public education. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the Board of Education hereby officially recognize and extend its deepest gratitude to Lady Tadon for exemplary service and contributions to the Simsbury Public Schools and be it further proclaimed that we extend our sincere best wishes for a joyful, healthy and fulfilling retirement. Signing, Jeff Tendall. So with that, I turn it over to...
I have kind of a long one for you today because I asked everyone to give me specifics about their Veterans Day celebrations because I thought that would be relevant to today's Veterans Day. So starting with the high school, I also did every single school this time. Starting in the high school, we had a Veterans Day celebration for veterans in the staff in the morning. My choir sang the national anthem for them. And then over the announcements, Principal Tydel read an announcement that she says connects the service of our veterans to our core values, passion, preparation and personal growth. And then also Mr. Curtis, I believe, read announcements throughout the day during like passing train. And then at four PM on Thursday, November thirteenth, which is this Thursday, we start the Pen-a-thon, which I'm sure everyone knows what that is. For those that don't know, it's over twenty-two hours that students are in the tech lab making pens and we encourage everybody to come. So if you're doing anything from four PM to ten PM, come to the Freedom Pen-a-thon, make a pen. The pens are given to veterans struggling with PTSD and adjusting to civilian life. And they also collect food donations and cash donations at that event. And then boys soccer is our last fall sports team, still moving on and they are playing New Britain in Newington on Wednesday at four thirty, playing New Britain for the semifinals. Then the middle school, they're starting their turkey trot, which my school is doing as well, but it's affiliated with the club. And then they're doing it through their connections classes. So the connections class with the most food will win a pizza party, so that's thoroughly consented. And then on Monday, they did two Veterans Day assemblies with six veterans from various branches where they came to share their stories and students could ask questions. And then HJNN is really persevering. They've up to nine episodes. There's a link here if you want to watch them, which they're on their website too. They're pretty funny. I watch them on Google too. And then all of the elementary schools, I believe, are doing conferences coming up or have already done them. So Tooten Hills is starting their conferences. And then they did a community thing with veterans where they had like veterans from the community come in with their student. Then at Latimer, they did a veterans breakfast, similar sort of idea, and then did a drive-through parade. And they're also, their Halloween night on the twenty-fourth had four hundred kids. And then Central, Central has a big list of things that they've done like coming to sort of facilitate Miss Messiah in with the new students. So they did a harvest dinner, which welcomed all the new families. The hallway hustle was tied to the fun run, so they just kind of like ran through the hallways. The sales assembly celebrated students based on their character traits. And then she gave out a principal perseverance award at one of the assemblies for a student showing resilience and determination. Then they did the Camp Jewel stuff and then there are also their teacher conferences are coming up. Squadron Line, similar sort of idea with the veterans presentations where they have veterans from their communities come in, speak to the students, students can ask questions. And then Squadron Line also does holy conferences. And Squadron Line is supporting the SHS Fishing Club with the Shoe Drive this week and then also doing the Turkey Drive.
But before, I just want to say, I appreciate you mentioning the Turkey Trot and I know you guys, I say this every year, I know you're probably sick of it, but I just want to remind everybody, the Turkey Trot started by Jack Bannon, teacher in this district. May or may not have been my sixth grade teacher at Squadron Line. So I just really, really encourage everybody to get mine and give support.
No committee updates, just gotta echo everything you said about Lydia. I'm sorry, thanks, setting a good example. Appreciate everything.
Just a few things first, thank you to all the veterans who have served and their families. Second thing is, I just so appreciate all the students who came in and spoke in public out of the audience. They did such a beautiful job. They were very open and I just really appreciate the time and energy they put into that. And the third thing is, Lydia, thank you for all that you've done for Simsbury, the board members, and you've big shoes to fill. So we'll miss you.
No committee updates, obviously want to echo what you said earlier about Lydia. Just a quick story. I first met Lydia in two thousand and five at the YMCA. She was the preschool teacher for Tim, who's now a senior college. Like in the two-year-old, like a two-year-old, not a preschool, but like a two-year-old program at the YMCA. I'm gonna miss sitting next to her and hearing all the cave updates, so we will certainly miss you, Liam.
I don't know if you touched on it, so I'm sorry for repeating it, but Terriffle also does a Veterans Day where they have the kids come in. But what I think is cute about it, I don't know if all elementarys know that, but the third and fourth graders, I believe, learn songs and then they sing them to the veterans during the assembly, which I thought was really cute. And so thank you to all the veterans and then also, I love you Lydia, I won't lie. I wish you so much. You're so awesome and I can't imagine space for you, so you better come back and second us.
I think, you know, we were talking earlier about when we decided to change the Veterans Day in the classroom, in the schools and I think it was a really good choice and I think that I love hearing that the kids are really doing a lot and I also think it's really, really cool because like my husband's a veteran and you know, I mean, these are people who sacrifice their loved ones for periods of time. And I think when you see them all in the school, I think the kids can say, whoa, I'm not alone. I've got other, you know, other people who are having the same thing, missing their loved ones too. And a big thank you to veterans, of course. I have my family members and it's just a very cool and beautiful service that they do for our children. Lydia, there's just nothing to say. It's going to be very, very strange and we're going to miss you. And I don't like being the oldest one here now. It's a lot for me to think about. But the good news is I will never make twenty-eight years.
It was great seeing all the different ways that our schools were celebrating the Veterans Day. And they all had assemblies, but they all had their own flair to them, which was really neat to see. Lydia, just want to thank you. Lots of different stories, but you were there at the beginning when Neil hired me to come to Simsbury as the assistant principal of the high school and you chased me out to the parking lot and just were completely supportive of me personally and professionally and you helped me to grow up in this district. So I'm always thankful to you.
Like Brian, the first people in my family to meet Lydia were when my children were at the preschool programs at the Y and would come home talking about Ms. Lydia. And then in two thousand, when I got hired here and a couple of months later, my family ran into Lydia out at a restaurant and she came over to talk to my family and my kids could not believe I now worked for Ms. Lydia. That was sad. It also strikes me that my two children are now also twenty-eight years old. So, thank you for everything, Lydia.
No business, but I remember when I was new and the most warmest, most welcoming one was Lydia and that always stuck with me. So I've enjoyed working with you and best of luck.
It's her superpower.
It is.
I'm good. I do want to say, can I ask two more things? I'm sorry. But I worked on the Simsbury Celebrates event that happens Friday and Saturday after, the Saturday after Thanksgiving and we are currently needing more gingerbread houses. So it's a shameless plug, I'm very sorry, but I would really like people to look on our website and find some friends and make a gingerbread house because it's really fun to do and we have a video online that will tell you how to make one. And we really, we need more gingerbread houses desperately. And so I would really like to take this moment, uh, to do that, sorry. I'm only desperate.
Excellent. Please.
Anyway, oh, thank you. I'm ready for my... It's okay. You know, I can take as long as I want. As the eldest member of this really distinct board, I can do that. So anyway, but I just want to say thank you very much and the bottom of my heart, thank you very much. The reception previous that was given to me and all the very kind words and the past board members that came and others and my family meant very, very much to me and you know, I'll spare you my speech again, but it's twenty-eight years of fighting that and it seems like yesterday, it seems like yesterday I was teaching your little ones and here they are. How old are you? Jesus, so anyway, that was also a great time in my life too. But I will miss you all deeply. I care for you. I care for this district. I care for all, as I mentioned before, from parents to community, to teachers, to staff and most importantly, the students is what gets me up every day to do what I do. It's about the students and not only the students in this district, but the students in this state and the students nationwide. So you know, board service is not easy, but it's crucial. And I so appreciate that you're all continuing to do this and you people will be coming and sitting on here. So I will not be far. I will be watching you from my couch, as I said. You know, maybe the audience will raise my hand for something, but... So I do have something for my fellow board members only, so I'm going to pass this on. Please pass it on only to the board member. This is for you guys. What it says...
Stop me before I volunteer again.
It says, stop me before I volunteer again.
We should just wear them. It's going to be a brooch.
So I had, I was cleaning and I just said, oh, and this was given to me. I found it in the drawer when I first started board service and I said, oh my God, I'll never forget. It just got stuck in there, but anyway, so that's it. I found it in the drawer when I first started board service, and I said, oh my God, I'll never really forget it, it just got stuck in there, but anyway, so um, so, so that's it, but uh. And just reading my last communications report is um coming up, it's gonna be the Cave Delegate Assembly. And, and the uh, the conference, you know, the delegate assembly, we're voting on all the resolutions for um the general assembly coming in January. And then the other has just on the national bribe, uh, you know it's going on the national bribe, but the big, big push right now is universal vouchers, so um, you've gotta be concerned about that because more states are starting to just look at that. Um, professional learning in the AI world is applicable for state and local and board leaders. And how the shifting education oversight um is gonna be a part of the education crisis if we don't advocate and what we do for all of it. So that is the end of my reports, and we will hopefully have new people in my previous positions to be able to continue to do good work for everyone. Through reports, and it's such an honor to see, to see here with all of you, all of your, and you part of this very distinguished Board of Education. Means very much to me.
Thank you. First ballot, all the things. Excellent.
I'm trying to have a perfect segue.
Any discussion on the, on the medals? How is in favor?
Uh.
Any votes? Uh, next up is the uh, the bargaining agreement.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll get it started and then uh throw it to Brian if he would like to add some things before I go through the details of the settlement with the uh Teachers Union, with the SDA contract, um, was settled um in October uh at, at mediation and um has been ratified by the, the um teachers uh about two weeks ago, so it's our opportunity. I will go through the details here in a moment, but um I certainly wanna thank the people from this board that were involved um through personnel and negotiations, which Ryan chairs, um, and some others got their first opportunities to see what late night negotiating is all about, um, with uh Jess Parise, Lydia, and Tara. Thank you for all the hours that you put into the process, um.
Jen and Tara.
Jen, Jen, this is.
Last time.
I was like, you forgot about me!
I'm sorry, how did I do that? I'm sorry, Jen.
And I'd like to be off now.
I think I switched my city.
My apologies. Um, spend that much time together and then I forget. Um, but hopefully the snacks uh helped get us through while we were in caucus, and we, we found an extremely excellent trail, excellent city. Um, but it's, it's a lot to ask of volunteers and um for, for uh them to persevere through that process. I will go through the details in a moment, but Brian, what would you like to add?
No, I, you said it Neil, I just wanna thank um you first and foremost for all of your time, um, obviously Jess, Jen, and Tara as well. Um, I was thankful that we got things wrapped up in a timely, pretty timely manner compared to previous years, and I just wanna thank members of the teachers um who came in and, and pleasantly, uh, nice to work with, so it was a good experience for us.
Thank you. So to uh take the high level uh highlights, uh, uh, you can follow on the exhibit here, the as is typical, it's a three-year contract from twenty twenty-six, uh, July one, twenty twenty-six to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. The overall three, the way these get talked about is in, what is the overall three-year value of the contract? Uh, and you can see that as a percentage, we came to a thirteen point oh three percent increase over three years. Slightly below the state average, which is how this gets benchmarked, so, um. But the difference with Simsbury's contract, as the negotiating team learned, is that because we keep our teachers, the, the cost of moving younger teachers up the steps is much lower in Simsbury than it is in other communities. Therefore, we were able to um take an average settlement, but get more money to the top for our teachers who have been here for a long time. By not spending it, bringing less veteran teachers up the scale, you can uh really make a difference, and we're gonna close a gap with some local communities for our teachers, so, um, and you can see in the first, the, the increase to the top in each year was three point four percent in year one, three point four percent in year two, and three point five percent in year three, along with some money sprinkled onto the steps. Um, we did make some movement with insurance, as the teachers will contribute half a percentage more to their share of the premium in each year of the contract, going from the current twenty-one percent that they pay to by the end of the contract, it'll be twenty-two point five percent of the premium that they pay. And we also were successfully able to negotiate some prescription management that should help contain costs uh into this negotiation. A, a small matter of um retiree benefits, this had been in the contract, we upped the amount. This is basically helping people who retire before they're sixty-five, so let's say you retire at sixty, but you're not gonna be able to get on Medicare till you're sixty-five, so you stay on our benefits and pay for it yourself. This is a stipend to help defray a little bit of that cost, which is significant during those retirement years. Um, little, uh, just some clarification on late and long-term uh disability to we had an error in the contract that said that people had six months to sign up for those benefits. You don't, it's, you have to do it within the first month of uh employment, and we just needed to make sure that clarification got in there. The additional compensation, we met uh the stipends, which are things of uh coaches, uh instructional leaders, club advisors, things like that, there's a section of the contract, um, and we negotiated uh with them to I just finished with a separate committee that reviewed those, and they're gonna, two point five percent will be added onto each of the stipends. Uh, uh, one dollar increase to their professional hourly rate, this is like if you're, if Sue brings you in the summer to write curriculum, this is like the hourly rate that you get, and it's other purposes as well. And then finally, under the other contractual language changes, um, the teachers really emphasized wanting a four-hour block of time. We, we have two days before students come that are teacher, uh, professional development days. They said, really, just getting ready, we can sometimes overdo it with the professional development. And they asked to negotiate that on that second day that they be given four hours of time just for themselves to get things organized. Um, and we agreed to that language. Um, we had to get uh in compliance with the law on the Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Act, um, and this uh was an agreement on the teacher's side. The Connecticut Paid Sick Leave Act was allowing people to take the first forty hours of sick time in hourly increments. Hourly increments don't work for schools, like, we can't get a substitute, we, so the negotiation consisted of making sure went back to what the past practice was before this law was passed, which is if you need to take time, you gotta take a half day or a full day. Those are the increments that you can take. Um, changed to the ability to take personal days, they used to have one day where they didn't have to offer a they could just be confidential about the reason, we agreed to increase that to two. Um, and then an important issue was the language about moving up its salary degree, uh, salary advancement. Um, and we were able to get some language that um will, first of all, we have a s- a master's track, then a sixth year, which is thirty credits beyond a master's, and then a seventh year track, which is another thirty credits. We are very unusual to have that seventh year getting another thirty credits, we, there's only one other in Hartford County. So we were able, the most important part of this negotiation was to say, after this year, you have to do a doctoral degree to get to that level. And not just another thirty credits, because one of the things we're finding is that the thirty credits in the online market of coursework can be pretty easy to get under some vendors, and so we're kinda trying to put a slowdown to um, uh, that for the future. Um, and then a, a small issue about some classes that when they go to specials have to be put above the class size guidelines, and they asked that we would consider putting a para into the room to give those teachers some support. And we said we would agree to do that wherever we could, so, um, that represented a lot of conversation, a lot of work to get to these outcomes, um, and it's a, it's a good deal, it's a good deal for both sides, and that's nobody gets everything they want in a negotiation, um, but, you know, I think the parties greatly respect one another and got to a good outcome. So the motion is there for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, and uh, just one last thing I'll say is, you said it was a lot of information, and it, and it wasn't just the one night, this was like
Five nights.
Five nights, but a month and a half, two months of negotiations, so um, just wanna thank everyone once again. I'll move that the Board of Education ratified the proposed changes in the collective bargaining agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury Education Association for the period July first, twenty twenty-six through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
It was a lot of work, but it was, it was, I felt it was re- respectable, like respecting each other's opinions was, it went pretty well, I was impressed.
All is in favor? Any votes?
I'll, I'll close by saying, sh- a strange part of the statute about teacher negotiations is that now that the teachers have ratified and you voted, it has to go in front of the Board of Selectmen, which will happen next month. The Board of Selectmen can vote in favor of it. They can decide not to vote, in which case it becomes the contract anyway, and they have the right to um reject it, which I don't think they ever would, cuz that will put you back into arbitration, so, but it does have one more hurdle to clear. Um, and I don't know, that's been in the statute for a long time, so we're gonna be bringing it to the Board of Selectmen in December, I believe.
Excellent. Let me just add my thanks to all the parties, it's a lot of work. Uh, next on the, uh, on the calendar is the cancellation of the November twenty-fifth meeting.
I'm being moved, cancelled Board of Education meeting on Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Any, any discussion? All is in favor? Any votes? Next is the uh, the Tekon reports, or I, from our friends at Tekon, it's probably been with Jeff. Welcome Jeff. Familiar face.
Zach.
He is back. You should get Jeff a nameplate.
Just ordered the new members, you missed the window.
Thank you. So while Jeff's uh getting ready, I'll tee things up a little bit, so we invite uh Jeff, the principal of Tekon, back uh with us, he's a familiar face. Jeff's really spearheaded a couple of years worth of work, and we have a slide to go through that in a few minutes. It's when we did our long-term facility study and our planning, they all have Jeff on their screen, yeah. Um.
Sure.
So we're in a position now, as we think about long-term capital planning, um, to think about what our next major priority and project will be. And Jeff is here to walk us through some different options, we had the benefit of a presentation last Friday with our finance subcommittee to kinda work through it and uh give Jeff some suggestions, so, um, I think it'll be a great presentation, it's focused uh on Squadron Line School, but we'll give some rationale to why we are where we are, uh, and we'll go from there, plenty of uh time for questions and conversation.
I'm just gonna plug my computer in.
We are trying to fix this situation.
What's that?
We are trying to fix this situation. We're working on it.
If we need new schools, we can't afford it everywhere. You have to understand, we are trying to be brutal. I know it's a lady.
Well, good evening, everybody, uh, my name is Jeff Wazinski, I'm a principal at Tekon Architects, um, and for tonight, um, we've prepared um kind of a brief overview of the work that we've been, uh, we've completed over the last month and a half, two months now. Um, wanna take you on kind of just a summary of where we've been uh since the, um, since the beginning of the master plan. Um, talked a little bit about the next best step, uh, and why, the reasons why. We'll review um the Squadron Line existing conditions, there's a few slides in there just summarizing kind of the content of the existing conditions, and we actually walked uh the building in sight um this past week or last week. Um, then we'll go over the enrollment, uh, building size, reimbursement, kinda give a refresher on kind of the summary and how how we get to sizing and sculpting the buildings that we do, um, talk a little bit about the options and then talk about next steps. So, when we first began this um master plan back in two thousand eighteen, um, when I had hair. Um, but it's, I've been up to, uh, it's about seven years now since um we, we first started the master plan, and as everybody on the, around the table knows, we um started with Latimer Lane, renovated as new. So we submitted that grant application basically twenty twenty-one, June twenty twenty-one, um, and it took about three years or so to kinda design and construct it. And now, now we're headed into um looking at this next best step, and um, so on the right side of this slide, just wanted to kind of focus on what the current plan is, and certainly the, the content in here, please consider it a draft, but also of the schedule can be kind of changed or modified as, as we continue to receive input on, on the work that we've completed. So, as I mentioned, we, we've been working at this study for about a month and a half now. Um, we're looking at um the possibility of um a year, year and a half worth of work preparing grant applications. Similar process to what we went through for um the Latimer Lane, um, building to, towards some referendum. Right now, we have it targeted in twenty twenty-seven, that can change, certainly be modified. Um, and then submitting a grant application in that, in that June time period with a potential completion um in twenty thirty-one. But I have a more detailed schedule that I think will outline that. So, when we flip to the next slide, and I notice it's, it's not June twenty twenty-one, it would be June twenty twenty-seven grant application. Um, the next uh best step in, in why Squadron Line um in simple form is, the building really hasn't been touched since it was originally constructed, so it's, it's well-built building, um, has good bones. Um, but after fifty-six years, there's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, um, major building systems, uh, major envelope improvements. Um, as I mentioned, there's been no real significant renovations um since the building was built, unlike some of the other elementary schools in the district. Um, it's the largest elementary school um by population, um, and it also contains, um, it used to contain several years back, just the sole source of, of pre-K, but now that's been split between, um, between Squadron and Latimer Lane. Um, but it does contain a pre-K program, which is an important piece as we move through this presentation, because the state has has changed some of the reimbursement regulations and provided some incentives related to um early childhood care. Um, and then lastly, um, just walking the space, um, the quality of, of the educational space itself is, is Um and then lastly, um just walking the space, um the quality of, of the educational space itself is, is a bit challenging, right? So there's a lot of acoustical, this building, for those that aren't familiar with it, this building was um designed as kind of an open space, um open classroom plan. Um so every third classroom has a hard wall. So there's three classrooms that have a temporary partition or a, a folding partition that doesn't necessarily have the, the acoustical separation that you would want in today's educational environments. So that's a summary as, as to the reasons of why. Um let's walk through some of the existing conditions. Um we, I think we have a presentation a few years back on, on squadron line. But just to kind of set the table, the existing building's about ninety-one thousand square feet. The site is twenty acres. The existing enrollment's around six seventy-eight, six seventy, um in that range. Um the projected enrollment, and I'll, I have a slide on that and I'll show you um kind of how this leads to the building size. But um the projected enrollment is a steady increase of about seven oh four. Um it's not as significant as, as we had looked at in the past, but it is still modest increase. And that's pretty consistent with what we're seeing in districts um across the state is that that early to mid elementary has been pretty strong and steady. Um I think you're seeing more compressed um enrollment projection because of, there's not a lot of movement in the housing stock. So you, you're not, and that's hard to predict. Um so I think we're seeing, we're gonna see some changes to that enrollment um as things, as the um, as the rates kind of drop down and you start to see movement in the housing. That's historically, if you look back at the history, that's, that's what really generates it. As I mentioned, original, original construction nineteen sixty-nine, utilities, just the summary there. Um and then as we walk through, um we've created um a dashboard of observations just graphically to show you kind of general conditions. So we started with site analysis, things like parking sidewalks, play areas. They're in fair core condition, right? So there, this area, um this site um has adjacent wetland properties um next to it. So there, there's damp conditions throughout that tend to sometimes um deteriorate, some of the things like pavement sidewalks a little bit faster than originally, you know, as you, a little bit faster than of the normal deterioration. Building envelope, we gave a red uh on the dashboard just because the, the roof has active leaks. Um the exterior perimeter um envelope windows, single pane. Um so there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the envelope, exterior envelope of the buildings, roofs, windows, doors, ceilings, those kind of things. Safety and security, um so there was a, a fairly um modest modification to the building for the safety, security. Um so there's good visibility from the administration suite. There was windows that were added. You have the um, the um secure vestibule lock. So that's in decent shape, but the rest of the perimeter of the building still needs some work to meet the current standards, which are the school safety infrastructure guidelines. Program space, I mentioned, I touched on kind of the acoustical challenges or exist, existing conditions challenges. But there's also, right, this building was designed before things like special education ever existed. So there's real challenges with um intervention, coaches spaces, um the specialized resource rooms. Um so we see that throughout as well. Um from a code life safety, accessibility perspective, um anybody familiar with the building? There's the kind of the academic wing, and then there's the, the gymnasium cafeteria um portion of the building, and it's connected by this, this, this long ramp. Well, that ramp isn't um code compliant. Um so accessibility, um when we talk about universal access to buildings and sites these days for, for all of our students and all of our staff, that is um a priority in, in buildings. Um so things like floor clearances, millwork, and you'll see it in the photos, and ramps, and access to spaces, to public spaces really needs to be compliant these days. Building systems, um again, very simple back then, you know, sixty years ago. There was perimeter radiation, and if you wanted ventilation, you opened the window. So there's not um a sophisticated uh building infrastructure, building systems for proper air exchanges in the building, something that we would look at. Um there's, as I mentioned earlier, inconsistent uh support spaces, not only from a programmatic uh perspective, but also from a practical one, things like toilet spaces, storage, utilities, those kinds of things. And lastly, just, I, I want to touch on the quality of the space, although, you know, the building has been well-maintained over its years. Um just the overall quality and expectations of today's contemporary educational environments, it just doesn't meet that standard. So again, uh we put that together um for, for the community. So in case the community is looking at this presentation, they can see easily kind of some of the areas that are, have the most priority in the building. The next few slides uh indicate some of the conditions, things like single pane windows, the exterior envelope um needs attention with the brick facade. Um mentioned some persistent moisture challenges in the lower level of the building. So the lower level of the building is at or near the same elevation of um kind of the wetlands that are neat, that are adjacent to it, top right photo. So that can lead over time to some challenges. Um and then you just see the remainder um of the conditions overall. Uh things like the active roof leaks really need to be addressed. Um if they're persistent, there, that leads to some concealed conditions that you really need to, to, to need to dig into to make sure things like deck deterioration, roof deck deterioration. It just, one thing leads to another when you have these kinds of conditions, unfortunately. And lastly, the, the last photo I'll pick on is the bottom right, and that's just an indication of the mechanical systems, right? So you have a lot of these window AC units for, for temperature control and the perimeter radiation, something that we wouldn't see in today's um contemporary educational environments. The next um slide is really just the existing conditions um as you map them out. So north is directly up. So as we move through some options later on in the presentation, um the site plan will have the same orientation. On the left side is Squadron Line Road, top is Hoskins Road. Um so the, the, the site is really bifurcated by that, kind of that blue spot there, which is the, the um identified wetland via the GIS website um for, for your town. Um relatively flat with exception to access off a squadron line road, which does create challenges with bus uh apparent drop-off and site circulation. Um because you really are stuck to that one entry um into the site overall at the moment. A flat topography on the north side of the site. Um we would have to, you know, as things move forward, you would want to look at some due diligence. Obviously flag and kind of hone in on kind of the wetland soils and, and wetland areas. And um on the bottom of your screen that just popped up, um there's an adjacent town-owned property in the triangular piece there that I have a larger map that I'll, that I'll talk about that. That could be a potential benefit, not, not so much for, for placement of structures, but just to give a little bit more buffer space should um you decide to go with a new type, new construction. And there, the, the bubble that just popped up is the steep slope area um at Squadron Line on the, on the left side of your slide there. So how do we size um the, the building itself? Um and for those that do remember, we, we look at, um the state wants you to look at the highest enrollment in the eight-year window. Um for purposes of this effort, uh we took the latest, uh thank you Neil, the latest Nezdek projections um from, from late October. And this is only a five-year projection. So we picked the highest enrollment, which is, which is six hundred and twenty-four students for K to six. And you add the eighty pre-K um to that, and you end up with seven hundred and four total students. And it's a pretty simple map. This, the state has changed some of the forms, some of the regulations, some of the way that things are calculated since um we had run through this with, with Latimer Lane. Um so on the left side, don't expect you to read it, but the left side is kind of the new state form. You plug in all your, your square, uh all your student information, the size of the building, the age of the building. And you end up with what's called an allowable area. Um so the allowable area is what the state will reimburse as far as square footage of the building. And what we do is we call, we call it, we gross up the building, because the state measures inside the exterior face of the um inside, I'm sorry, the interior face of the exterior wall. Um but when you're, when you're estimating buildings and when you're sizing buildings, you're, you're talking gross square footage. So we want to go to the outside perimeter. So that represents about eight and a half. So long story short, the one takeaway you want from this slide is if you were to build a building or add to a building, like the existing squadron line at about ninety-one, ninety-two thousand square feet, you can build a building of about a hundred thousand square feet, ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-five, and get that all reimbursed at your reimbursement rate. Okay? So that's, that's the number that should stick in everybody's head is that ninety-nine, six twenty-five. Some of the changes in the reimbursement um are, are quite significant. Um I'll start with the first. Right in the center of that slide, there's a lot of information, but the, the main takeaway here is that new construction, um the state would reimburse you at twenty-nine point one seven. General construction, or we call it renovate as new, they reimburse you at thirty-six. So every dollar that you spend, the state would, as long as you follow the rules, the state will pay you thirty-six cents on that dollar. Now, um several years back, that delta used to be ten percent, right? So, so there you, there was more of an incentive, basically. There was a higher reimbursement rate for renovate as new versus new construction. I'm not sure exactly all the reasons, but they came out this past August with new reimbursement rates or updated reimbursement rates. And s- and in most communities, that delta has come a little closer together. So you can see here that delta is only about seven or seven percent now, so it's not the ten that it once was. The two um footnotes underneath the thirty-six point four-three are critically important to, to the conversation tonight. So last uh spring session, um the state, the legislative body approved um basically a fifteen percent, an adder to your base reimbursement for early childhood care and education, so birth-to-five programs. So that fifteen percent would get applied to the entire footprint of the building. So it would be applied to the entire ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-five square feet. So effectively taking your, your reimbursement rate from either thirty-six or twenty-nine and bumping it up another fifteen percent. Um and then the other piece that they passed was a fifteen, an additional fifteen percent for areas that are focused on specialized education only. So, so that is just for areas in the building focused on specialized education. So it doesn't apply to the entire building, just, just the specialized ed. And the intent of that is to try to bring outsourced students back into the district, because we know how incredible costs are when you outsource um for specialized education. So a lot to consider on state reimbursement. Um there is one piece on this, and again, a lot of text here, but um what I wanted to do is include where you could find it, should you want to do additional research or if the community does. If, if we can do an analysis between a renovation as new and new construction, and I don't think the state really cares all that much which one you plan to do. What they care about is the total cost. If we can prove through our analysis that new is just as or more economical than a renovation, like a phased occupied renovation, you're entitled, and this is the section, you're entitled to the higher reimbursement. So that's a piece that we should consider as we move through, as, as the community considers um the various different options, whether you renovate or build new construction. So there were three, there were three asks of our work, basically. Um and it's somewhat similar and parallel to, to the work that we did through Latimer uh Lane. The first ask was, well, what if you just, status quo, what if you just fix on a year-to-year basis all the challenges that are in the building? So you take it on a ten, fifteen, twenty-year plan, one summer you do lighting, one summer you'll do electrical systems. Um so you can, you can take that approach, that, that practical pragmatic yearly approach. Um the challenges with that is, on the left side, there's kind of some categories here to consider. Um and I'm gonna walk you through those. So the expected duration, if you were to do that, it's gonna take you twenty, maybe even longer, twenty years to, to address all of these, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna do these on a kind of a summer annual basis um scenario. Um we already mentioned the building's about ninety-one thousand square feet. The, the big challenge with those kinds of projects is um they're called non-priority projects. So you can submit, so you can submit to the state for um eligible um grant reimbursement. They're non-priority, which means um not everything's gonna be reimbursed. So your reimbursement, your effective reimbursement rate is gonna come down because they're gonna say, well, if things that you should have maintained are broken and you need to fix them, that's gonna be ineligible. So, so your effective reimbursement rate is gonna come down quite significantly. Sometimes we've seen it almost as much as half of that reimbursement rate. So that's an important piece when, when the community asks, well, let's just fix a little at a time. And the other piece to that is that not all of those fixes are gonna be eligible for reimbursement. Okay? So, so that's a piece that um as we move through, and I'll, I'll share with you some of the costs associated with that from our original master plan CIP. So um phasing logistics, so when you have a building that's about sixty years old, um replacing a mechanical system isn't a, you know, nights and weekends job. It is, it is likely more than a summer-long job. It's probably about a four to six month, you know, maybe even six to eight month job. So you're gonna have to think about how you kind of implement that kind of work while students, faculty, and staff are in the building. The second piece, or second option that we were asked to look at was um what's called renovate as new. And the, and the best example of that is, is Latimer Lane just completed. And the reason why um communities are attracted to that is because it's, you have to apply for renovation status. And if you apply as part of your grant and you're accepted and it's approved, things that would ordinarily be ineligible, like, you know, fixing, you know, the lighting that you should have fixed, you know, you should have maintained or the, or the, or the heating that should have been maintained, all of that becomes reimbursable, right? So, so your ineligible goes way down and you get closer to that higher reimbursement rate. The, the bigger challenge with a renovate as new is, and um I have a gentleman sitting behind me that knows very well what it means, is where do you put the students? How do you, how do you develop a plan and a phased occupied phasing plan that can safely um protect the students, faculty, and staff while work is being constructed on site? And in Latimer Lane's example, the, the plan was begging for a connection at either end because it was never, the building was never connected circulation-wise. So it almost, it, it almost had two built-in areas for additions. When we start talking about the options for squadron line, um it's a bit different, right? Because you have that uh classroom academic portion of the building, and then you have the, the common core portion of the building. And they're both kind of very tight circulation, um I'll call them donuts, if you will, with not a lot of opportunity for, for addition. So the biggest challenge with a renovate as new is swing space, finding a spot to put the students. A, a building of this size, which is about ninety, ninety-two, ninety-five thousand, is gonna take you probably three to four years if you were to go through it and do a phased occupied renovation. Um so that is the biggest delta between um status quo and new building. When we move to new building, a new building of this size is a, is about eighteen to twenty months' worth of construction from, from um start to finish. Um we would propose in a new building, uh the building would be about a hundred thousand square feet. We would demolish, likely demolish the existing building at ninety-one, three sixty-one. All of that work would be reimbursable, right? So one of the challenges many communities face is if you're gonna build new, what hap- what are we doing with the existing school and does it become some other use? So all those are still likely on the table, not the entire building, as far as reusing the entire building be on the table. So it's something we could take a look at if the, if the community's interested. But my point is that the new construction and the demolition would all be reimbursed. Um so we would maximize the kind of the, the environment, the twenty-first century educational environment. Um it would likely be two phases, right? So we build the building on the back or side or on the opposite of the uh so, side of the site. Um once that building's done, tear down the existing and kind of do some um site and parking remediation and, and new work, wrapping it up basically in the wrapping it up basically in the fall when the new building opens. So those are the three scenarios that we looked at. Um, digging into scenario number one, um, and it's, it's, it's an option that um some communities um do commit to, the, the challenge with it is you, you do in fact have to commit to it, right? So, so these are projects that will have to happen every year um in order to, to address, to comprehensively address um the building. So that can be a challenge um sometimes. Normal CIP. Exactly. So, so there are benefits, you know, you can, you can plan the projects on a year-to-year basis. Um, you can kind of maintain, it maintains the building, you're not, you're not making any real changes to the building. And they can be broken down into smaller, smaller projects. So, so there is an advantage, the, the cons are that it's not gonna be comprehensive, you're not addressing any of the programmatic needs. Um, ultimately, if you do the math, and we'll, we'll show you in the, the next slide, um, the escalation, if you were to, if you were to take a project like this that could take two to three or three to four years and stretch it out over twenty-five, the escalation just becomes um quite, quite scary. Um, and then the other piece is you still are gonna have to deal with some swing space challenges. Because not every project's gonna be able to be completed while the students aren't there. And then the last piece, and, and for anybody that's kind of renovated their own home or has witnessed a, a building renovation, if we're just replacing the mechanical system above our heads, we have to take down the lights, we have to take down the ceiling, we have to take down the fire alarm. We have to make sure that we're not touching the other systems, but still put in the new mechanical system. So inevitably, you're gonna be doing some work and repeat work through this process. So perfectly fine scenario, those are the challenges related to it. The big piece is it doesn't address the programmatic needs. This slide here, this table on the left um is taken from um the CIP list from our master plan. So five years ago, so five years ago, we identified about um nineteen million dollars worth of work. Um, and the kind of one to three, three to five, five to ten, you know, just the, just the kind of fix-it-as-you-go scenario. If you escalate that up to today's dollars, you're talking about twenty-five to thirty million, just, just to address those components that we identified. On the far right, and again, I don't expect you to, to read all that, um, then becomes, you know, if you wanted to take a more comprehensive approach, like putting in a full fire protection or putting in, replacing all the plumbing infrastructure, those numbers start to become much more significant up in that fifty-five and sixty-five range. Again, this slide doesn't address any programmatic needs. So that's, again, one of the challenges of that option. So when we walk through the next two options, I already mentioned swing space. We, with renovate as new, we just need, again, a safe spot for the students. Um, with new construction, we would likely propose a two-story building just for, for practical plant efficiencies. Um, we could look at the north and south side, and we have a couple of diagrams to kind of walk through. And then um if there are alternate um considerations um to accommodate um some of these like, for example, if we can move all the students out of the building to some building uh in the community, um, a renovate as new would become that which more easy to achieve. So on the existing conditions, I've walked through, most of these already. But I wanted to highlight on the bottom-left side of this slide, um, the adjacent um parcel to the south is a town-owned property. And again, not suggesting that we would necessarily build on it, but what it does is it gives you the ability to, to create and maintain that buffer to that existing neighborhood while pulling, if you wanted to look at new, while pulling a new, new construction right up to that property line. So we could enhance the buffer, we could increase the buildable area on the existing site. Um, and we can also address um basically the screening um between what would be a new building and adjacent, e- existing adjacent properties. This slide um shows you an aerial view, north is to the right. Um, so as a renovate, um, add addition and renovation or renovate as new, we would likely look at where that blue area option two is for, for the possible addition to the building. Um, and then um consider some demolition. For new builds, we could look at the, the northern side of the site, which is labeled option three A. Um, that would of course take over temporarily anyways, the existing soccer fields. Um, or we could look at option um three B, which is more towards the uh eastern, southeastern portion of the site. And again, not necessarily building on the town-owned property, just building up adjacent to that property line. I think that the ability, you know, when walking the site um last week, the ability to um to, to site a building further back on the site has a lot of, of potential benefits. Uh, extends um queue lines for bus and, and um parent drop-off to alleviate some of the traffic concerns that we know happen on um both squadron and Hoskins Road. Um, so those are the three sites that we looked at. Um, the other piece that I wanted to highlight and flag here is if you were to site a building um in either of those two locations, option three A or three B, um, that green's portion of the site, which would be the, the northwest corner of the site, right at Squadron Line and Hoskins, could open itself up for a pad site, could be more fields, could be um basketball courts. It could be some community um benefit, um, so that it, it's usable land, it's relatively flat. It's already somewhat improved with um some parking and, and play fair fields there. And we feel strongly that if, if a building was, is located kind of towards the eastern side of the site or, or the bottom section of, of the screen, um, there's plenty of distance between the building parking and that potential pad site. So something for the, for the community to think about as we move along. I know I'm throwing a lot at you, but we're almost there on, on, on planning options. Just to zoom in a little bit on that town-owned property, just to, to be clear with what the, the thought process would be is there is a bit of a grade change there. Again, pulling the building right up to the, to the edge of the existing property um would benefit. And then we could enhance that buffer to that existing um residential neighborhood there. So um I, I do think it's an advantage um to this, to option three B as far as building site. Um, a couple of other just footnotes, so you're aware, the property on the right side of the screen is an existing private property. Um, there was an easement a few years back um for an outdoor educational space, it's kind of highlighted in the white dotted line. Um, so, so the school is in fact um using a portion of that through an easement. Um, something that we could definitely make sure to maintain um with whatever option is selected. So when we go through the um planning scenarios, if we were to look at a renovate as new and with a substantial new build to, to basically build in swing space, you could build a new, new two-story addition more or less to the east of the existing gym cafeteria portion of the building. Um, first, that would give you that built-in swing space, if you will. Um, so you would build that, you would renovate um the blue portion on your screen. And then ultimately, when that building, when the building is um complete, both new and renovation, you could demolish the um existing two-story um section of the existing squadron line building. Once you did that, you could then improve the sites, we would maintain the fields, increase the, the outdoor play and education area. We would um make a more, more compact and efficient parking um at the front of the building, of the front of the addition and renovation. Um, and then we could also look at proper separation of the parent drop-off and bus drop-off. So we could, we could use the existing curb cuts on Squadron and Hoskins to separate the traffic out and increase queue lanes, so ultimately improve the overall traffic flow on the site. So very high-level conceptual plan for consideration. If we were to consider um a new two-story build, there's two real obvious portions you would build on the northern side. That's what the footprint could look like. Um, so the footprint of a, of a hundred thousand square foot building is about sixty-eight to seventy thousand square foot in footprint, cause it's basically a two-thirds, one-third separation, if, if, or just as a sense of scale. So you could build that building, you could put part, uh, bus drop-off off of Hoskins. You could then put um parking um in a separate parent drop-off line and have outdoor play kind of towards the um eastern side of the new building. Again, the challenge with this one is that more play areas would, would occur after you demolish the existing building. You could create more parking and more play on um essentially the southern half. It's just, you end up with pretty much what you have today, is there's fields on one side of the site and, and there's limited access points to get there. So it creates from a educational curriculum PE perspective, it creates a little bit of an operational challenge. So that's the reason why we, we took a harder look um at uh basically a two-story build on the southern, I'll call it southeastern portion of the site. Again, the footprint, you can see there, bottom right hand of the screen. You could create some outdoor protected outdoor play, once the building's done, you could demolish the building. You could put plenty of parking up front, you could put plenty of green space, play space, playscapes adjacent to the building. We're confident that through refinement of this plan, you can get the necessary age-appropriate playscapes, outdoor education and general play around the perimeter of the building without having to go maybe, you know, a field day or maybe like an all-day event, you would use the northern site. But what's, what's nice about this sighting option is it preserves um what we know our community feels to the north. And it opens up that northwest corner, the top corner of your, of the property for, for more development potentially, or redevelopment or some kind of community use. So that's the options that we looked at, and, and the last kind of portion of this is the costs and schedule. And um I think I've used this analogy before, but I'll use it again. Um, when we talk about costs, we're, we're always talking about total project costs, which are construction and, and soft costs. And the way it works out is basically eighty percent of, of the budget is construction costs, twenty percent are soft costs. You take this building that we're, we're sitting in off the ground, turn it upside down and shake it out. I come out, tables, chairs, equipment, all of that is soft cost, everything that stays is construction. So simple way to think about it, but what's most important is the numbers that you're gonna see, which likely are gonna be eye, eye-popping, include escalation, contingencies, F, F and E. It is, there's no surprises, it's, it's a comprehensive, as it was with master planning, as it was with Latimer Lane. This is a comprehensive budget planning approach um to projects. So numbers that we're seeing, um, today's costs, uh, believe it or not, in middle and high school are approaching a thousand dollars a square foot. Um, when you project that out to twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-eight, you're looking at in, in the range of eleven to, to twelve hundred um dollars a square foot. So um I have more data to show you, but believe me, we, we do a lot of work in Connecticut, a lot of work in Rhode Island, those numbers are pretty accurate, they're based on projects and planning, projects that were just bid and projects that are under construction. And we validate them with probably a half dozen of the, the major CMRs in the state and in the region. Um, I will say, cause there may be a question, escalation is, we saw extreme escalation from twenty-twenty-one to about twenty-three-ish, twenty-four. That's leveled off, even though there's been some fits and starts with tariffs and non-tariffs and but we're back to about four and a quarter um annual, um, four and a quarter percent annual construction escalation, so that compounds. So renovate is new, left side of the screen is a lot of the detail, but it's the same structure. Um, so when we compare renovations and new construction, we wanna be fair, equal in, in using the same unit costs and quantifying them correctly. So we'll look at the project summary, the number of students, size of the building, we'll look at demolition, parking, utilities, energy enhancements, um, then we'll look at our soft costs, which are about, again, tw- the twenty percent, but also include things like phasing logistics. On a, on our phased occupied renovate as new, you like, and at Squadron Line, you're likely to investigate the possible temporary modulators to put the students in so they can get bigger sections of the building to renovate. This is a little different, cause you have a two-story building, you can't have workers above or below a student, you know, a floor above or below. So it, it creates a little bit more challenges. Um, so when you summarize all this, the total project cost for a, for a complete renovation, renovate as new for building a, a hundred thousand square foot building more or less, is a hundred and thirty-one million dollars. Now, that's escalated um to the midpoint of construction. Um, and what, what it does is the cost to Simsbury is about sixty-eight million. And what that is, is it's your, your, your base reimbursement of thirty-six point four-three plus your fifteen percent for pre-day, and then minus some ineligible, cause there still will be some ineligible. The, the, the couple takeaways, besides the, the large numbers on the screen, that, that you, you need to consider as you, as you continue to contemplate these options, is escalation alone in, in this project is thirty-six point eight million dollars. So again, the state's looking for you to, to, to escalate the construction to the midpoint of construction and escalate the construction cost to the midpoint of construction. And when you have a, a three or four-year-long construction, that's, that's what happens. So when we look at new construction, same size, same format, same structure, same reimbursement. Believe it or not, it's, it's neck and neck with the total project cost, there, there will be some um variation in, in the cost as, as the options continually get refined. Um, so you're playing, you're paying much more in uh new construction for the new building. Um, but you're paying less, about seven or eight million dollars less in escalation. So that's kind of how, how these things start to, to weigh out. Um, so total cost to Simsbury is a little bit less, um, sixty-six million um because your ineligible's are more predictable um at two percent. So we'll continue to have the conversation about understanding what you're truly investing in the building and what you're getting, you know, what you're really getting as far as what you pay for.
So Jeff, real quick.
Yeah.
You shared that legislation before that it's not kind of state law here. You demonstrate that it's more affordable to build new construction, that's why you have the general construction reimbursement.
I do, yep.
So it's that type of exercise.
Yeah.
You have to demonstrate in a grant application.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's, there would definitely be, the expectation would be that there'd be more detail to it. Um, but we're going through a very similar scenario um for an elementary school in another district. And um we're working with the CMR, and the CMR is actually pricing phased occupied renovations more than new construction, just on a pure construction cost per square foot. And s- and some of the reasons, and we talked about it at our, um, our facilities meeting, some of the reasons are um related to things like environmental. Um, so the environmental challenges have become um much more complex. Um, so building has been environmental, but also site environmental. Um, that's um led to much more um kind of general conditions related to it and, and time. And um, and we hit a little bit of this in, in kind of the Latimer Lane, but um compo- building components in a phased occupied renovation, you need things like a switch, switchgear for electrical. You, you need that pretty much day one, but you, you can't get it day one because it takes a year, you know, to work. So that's creating a compounding effect on costs. It's not so much, it doesn't so much impact the new construction, cause you don't need portions of your building until you're It's not so much, it doesn't so much impact the new construction, cause you don't need portions of your building until you're done with your new construction. So that's, there's some hidden costs there that are not so easily explained. But but we are seeing the 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 cost between new and renovation come much, much closer together, yeah.
And Jeff, please um estimate a cost to Sims Berry, doesn't doesn't include the extra fifty percent for special education? It does not?
No, i- it it doesn't, and um I think once we flush out a little bit more in more detail, the program, the proposed program. Um we can apply that fifteen percent adder to just the specialized education program. And we know, we know that exists, um and I didn't work that into this presentation. We know that works, that exists for the pre-K program, but also the K to six as well.
So these numbers would likely come down somewhat.
Somewhat, yeah, I I think the 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 biggest impact is that additional fifteen percent for the, I'll call it pre-K, but early childhood. Um and I I do wanna say that I'm not sure how long that's gonna stay. Because that came in late last year, there was rumors of it, a lot of communities know about it. And I I think the intent, I didn't write it, but I think the intent is for communities to start preparing for some kind of um full-day experience for pre-K. Um similar to like my daughter started school half-day K, it's full-day K now. So um so I think what the the intent is to try to incentivize communities to get pre-K with their home elementary schools. Last slide, I promise, um and then I can answer any questions that go back to anything. The schedule, I just wanted to do a side-by-side. The the green portion is developing the preferred options where we are today. Um if if you submit a grant application, not next June, not June twenty twenty-six, but June twenty twenty-seven. You'll get on the priority list December of twenty twenty-seven. And that's usually when communities start planning the design. So if you were to start the design once you knew you were on the priority list. You're basically, for new construction, you could design about a year and a half. You could build about a year and a half, maybe you're in three-quarters, eighteen to twenty months, and open a building in twenty thirty-one. So it's not gonna happen tomorrow, but it, again, those, I think we've adequately communicate communicated. This kind of scale project takes four to five years. When you, when you go side-by-side with phased occupied renovate as new, you're likely adding two years to construction, so twenty thirty-three. And that's why those escalation numbers, they're they're significant, is because really what the state is asking us to do is to escalate to the middle of essentially twenty thirty. For new and to the middle of twenty thirty-one, thirty-two for a phased occupied renovation.
Quick thought.
Sure.
Amy, I'm not holding you to it. I'm just trying to play out the timeline in my head. So, build incomplete twenty thirty-one. Debt currently falls off from the Henry James, when and when would debt payments pick up for twenty thirty-one? If you need more time on that, come back at a later date, that's fine.
Yeah, I have to look at that for you. Cause we had two issu- issuances for Henry James. So I'll have to see when the last one comes off, and then we have the Latimer too, so I have to break that out for the other projects, but yeah, I can do that.
And just wanna say, kind of prior to any of this work going on and some of our conversations with the board over the summer. We've been having some dialogue, town manager, board of finance chair, Jeff, myself, Amy, just looking at debt service models and trying to understand times to fit uh things in to be able to to move forward. So it's pretty complex, possibly.
So um I know that was a a lot of info information, happy to go back to any slides and answer questions. But our next steps, generally speaking, are to kind of hone in on it, what a preferred option would be. Um if if you need more information in order to kind of make that decision, happy to do so. We can develop more sighting scenarios. Um obviously, we need to refine budgets, um assess impact, financial impact. Get get a little more um detail from a cost perspective and timing perspective. And um fine-tune some of the schedules and happy to help with any kind of engagement plans you need to communicate this out to the to the greater, greater community, so.
Really interesting, though, with some of the timing of the legislation, the two legislations that add to reimbursement. And the difference between a renovate as new, complete construction time, what it does to escalation, and build as new, when you consider all those factors.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of pieces to that puzzle that needs to be discussed.
Yeah, and and they're close enough where I think we can make the argument. I I we still have to flush out, you know, do you wanna use modulators? Is there a spot to put the students, that, you know, so all those could 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 move some of the numbers around. But generally speaking, I think they're, at this scale, I think they're close enough to make the argument in either direction.
Can I ask a question about cost of removing, if you knock down a building, what what does that, what cost does that look like for nineteen seventy-four?
So.
Is there, are there bets? Is environmentally, is that?
Yeah, it's a great question. Um so have really good numbers, combined, it's probably about fifty-five dollars a square foot, in between fifty and fifty-five. And about twenty of that is in uh is building environmental. So it's, it's less expensive on a cost per square foot than than if you were to go through it and each section and remediate and selectively demo for a renovation. So so you're probably about, you know, fifteen, twenty percent more when you're doing it in pieces, because you gotta put up walls to get down. But when you're taking the entire building, um it becomes more economical. Um you still have to, you still have to remediate at some level, but there's, it becomes a little easier, cause you can, you can, the piles are bigger and you can put them in different, different spots, so.
And those costs are included in this number?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yep.
It's very interesting.
A lot of processing.
Well, this is really interesting, the the costs are so close now, cause I mean, that was never the case before. I mean, it was always, it was always so much more expensive to build new than renovate as new, so it's it's interesting to see that shift.
Y- yeah, I mean, I think we're seeing in a lot of our work, just um we went through a case study, we're we're doing a project, um a couple of projects in Cheshire. And very much similar, one of the projects is very similar Norton School um to, you know, studying and analyzing um squadron line. And um yes, that was.
It's madness, though.
Sorry, we're tearing it down. But yeah, um so, and that analysis was completed early on. Um and the and the decision, so there are some things that you can't measure, um things like disruption. And and understanding the length of construction and the experience for somebody over a four-year period. So this is a, this is at least a third bigger than Latimer Lane, just from a s- a size of the building too. So so there are some differences um that um that people just need to kind of think about, cause it, cause it is, it is a bigger building. Um it's a two-story building, so it adds those complexities. I think if we if we were, it would be interesting if we were to reanalyze Latimer Lane today with the reimbursements and incentives that are given. You know, what that math would pen out to be. Um and we're also seeing it in the bid numbers. Um with the 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 amount of work that was out there, if if you're a builder and have an option between new versus a phased occupied complex renovation. Sometimes you get better numbers on the more attractive projects, so.
The reimbursement rate, I I got most of my questions answered last week.
Sure.
Most, no longer a ten percent delta, so when we did Latimer, there was about a ten percent delta.
There was, yeah, yeah.
It's, I find it, what's the reason that you're incentivized from a reimbursement rate, if assuming there is a delta, but we're gonna try to bring it together, right?
Hmm.
What's the reason they would give more money back for renovators and new? I would've thought of it the other way around.
I, I think there, several years back, there was um, I think a push to kind of. Yes, kind of reimagine existing spaces. I I, where it's very successful is where um you saw very large buildings and and enrollment decrease to a point where the building was twice as big as it needed to be. So we did a project in Colchester ten, twelve years back now, and that was exactly the case, where they could move all the students in one portion of the building. Completely renovate, build new portions and renovate the rest, so that was a a renovate as new technically, and move them into the building and tear down the rest. That, if if the, if if squadron line was twice as large, that would be a very viable option, because you're doing it in essentially two phases. So we saw a fair amount of those, of that kind of challenge. Um so it made sense then. Um I'm not exactly sure what's behind the changes in the percentages for, all the way up until this past August, it's always been a ten percent delta. I I'm.
So.
We'll find out.
I guess I'll state the obvious, I mean, if it's cheaper to build a new building than renovate as new. If it's eighteen months versus three to four years, the building, building versus renovate as new. If we're gonna get the same, if we're gonna get the same reimbursement rate to build new as with with renovate as new. I mean, I don't think anybody would say, what's renovate as new for a four-year project that's more expensive than building a new?
And that also doesn't maximize your program.
Where there's like, no compelling reason from a financial standpoint about building new, this particular one, from what you're saying.
I, yeah, it, this one's much more challenging than than the first one that we went through. I, it, there's.
There's nowhere to put kids in this, right? I mean, at Latimer, we got created, remember? We closed down the library for a year to create two more classrooms. We added, like, there was enough so that um, and even at the end, they were taking just like six classrooms at a time.
Right, right.
And.
Yeah, when we started Latimer, we actually only disrupted four classrooms. Um the the squadron, if you were to shut down a wing upstairs and downstairs, you're probably talking thirteen rooms, twelve rooms for the first phase.
And Marshall, there's our expense. Couple million bucks.
Yeah, so so we're doing a very complicated um phased occupied addition renovations to Cannelli School in Hartford. And they um are, they put out, I think it's five temp modulators. And I wanna say, I looked at the number and I think we might've brought it up at the, our meeting, i- I think it was between four and five million dollars to build them. The the the, one of the layers that you gotta consider is, if you're gonna use them for an extended period of time, then you need, you need accessibility. You need toilet facilities, you need accessible toilet. So it it became. It became uh much more than we had originally contemplated. So the days of kind of pulling up a, kind of a trailer and in in using it, I think you have to comply with all the codes. If it's gonna be there for a three or four-year period, um it it does need to comply with all of those codes. So um they didn't have space, they they, very similar scenario here, there was no room to put a significant addition. So we're really modestly adding to the building and comprehensively, comprehensively renovating the existing. So we chose the modular route, so it was actually, I think, cheaper to buy them to the, than to rent them.
If you do, no, just gonna say, if you do, no, I'm with you, Brian. And if you do, no, one of the things we didn't talk about here, but if you do a new build, you you also still leave the door open for, you talk about reimagining space.
Hmm.
You don't necessarily have to destroy the whole building.
True.
You can reimagine, like, I don't know, if you go back to slide twenty-six and then twenty-seven. Like, there's a world we live in where if we were to build as new, and you see what you have for twenty-six, twenty-six is done. And then twenty-seven is where you layer in phase two, where you start putting in the fields and different things in the back, right? You don't have to add fields at the back, you could repurpose, reimagine.
Yep.
This part of the school you potentially keep, which I think we'll be starting to discuss in the future at some point. So I think to your point, both your points about reimagining space and new, new's more efficient, it's better for the kids, it's better overall numbers, it's quicker at everything. You build new and then you still have flexibility, I know there's been some idea brought up down behind it, smart gentleman in the room, he brought it up. Um is there something you can do with the other part of the building? So I think that's something that you would consider too, so I I like that concept, right? Build new, you don't have to knock it down, gives you time to think, is there something we can do with this thing?
The advantage of renovating, like, like my old business, we talked about, is a financial advantage. It's the only advantage I see for doing, so fixing an old thing and making it nice again, is it's cheaper than buying something new. Buying the new is cheaper than renovating the old, be a fool to renovate an old building for a higher cost. If that's what we're against.
Sorry.
I'm just stating, I think it's obvious that, that.
And you could sell renovate the old building for something else, cause that's.
I just asked about the escalation cost, if I heard you correctly, you said roughly in that, in that one thirty-one million number, there's roughly thirty-six million in escalation cost? So if I can say this back, so if we put shelves in the ground today, so it would be a ninety, what, six million dollar profit, obviously not what we're.
Yeah, yep.
It, you might, my point of this is, is, right, we're gonna hear pushing this back, pushing this back, pushing this back. And and for financial purposes, and I understand all that, but I think what we also have to do and 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 get grasped on as a community is, sure, we can delay. But every, every year is another, what, nine million dollars roughly in in investment, it's it's a little money, right?
Well, on top of that, you have the cost to continue to maintain buildings that's valuable.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we potentially run the risk of that fifteen percent reimbursement disappearing as quickly as it appears.
Absolutely, my great. Right, which changes the whole story.
I mean, it's dramatically changing, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think your your effective reimbursement rate for Latimer Lane was down in the thirties, yeah.
What next for us, Jeff? I heard his next step, what about?
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to come back and think about a timeline for next conversation, how we get some synergy around. What are our thoughts about our priorities, right? I I felt it was important, I know members of the subcommittee and Amy as well, when we had planned to make sure we're doing our due diligence and looking at everything, our early planning conversations, even when we brought other boards. And we're just this global number, and it was kinda hard to wrap your head around, which is why we have the maintenance cost numbers to take a look at. Um so I agree with everybody's point about renovate new versus new. There also has to be some conversation about, alright, what is it, what does it cost and what does it look like, feasibility to just move things forward. So I think we need to get, you know, a cycle of of conversation dates on art and plan it, plan, which I'll need a little time with my team to think about. But I think we need to make a decision on what we feel most comfortable with. And then when do, when and how do we engage other boards in this process? Cause this is obviously everybody together talking about um affordability, talking about need, engaging the community, engaging parents. So fortunately, we have good experience and and a good track record with that, so we have good, good, good print to follow. But I think, first things first for us, alright, what are we most comfortable with? And how do we come to that consensus with the board, so then we can move the conversation?
And just so that the public knows, I know you and all have thought, we've all thought a long time about what schools should be nice and why squadron. Squadron's the only school that's never really been touched out of all of our schools. Among other reasons why, a lot of school, infrastructure's really falling apart in there. Um but really, the only one that hasn't been touched since it was born.
Correct. Since it was born, there you are, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, they have fifty-year-old carpet in there for not too, not too long.
Great, well, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good to have you back.
Yeah, good to see everybody.
With that.
Thank you very much.
Maybe it's appropriate we turn to Amy with our budget. I can do that. Or that you.
Yeah, I can do that.
And and it's quick, yeah. Um just laying out some important dates for the board of Ed and to the public to see on our budget process. Uh most important, uh kickoff being December sixteenth, which is the tri-board meeting. Uh, most important kickoff being December sixteenth, which is the tri board meeting. Um, we'll undoubtedly receive some guidance there and and discuss the board's parameters and have an opportunity to share. Things like our fixed costs and initial pieces of the, the planning puzzle. Uh, and then just kind of went through uh what our presentation plan is for the board in terms of key uh public presentations. Uh, that will be going. It's really all that is, but that imports first thing in December.
Yep.
We will do a lot of communicating, a lot of discussion, and a lot of kind of push out on where we are in this process.
Well, we, so with eleven twenty five off the calendar now, we need twelve nine. And then tri board twelve sixteen, pretty close together. Is there anything we should be thinking about going twelve nine?
I mean, one, one thing we'll set up is, I mean, my plan would be to pull the finance sub together, higher to the tri board. Where we, we talk about fixed costs, if that's something we want to share in the December four meeting, I'd do that as well. I mean, we could figure. Be close, I would think, at least give an idea on where we are. I don't mean for saying that, but. Um, you know, in terms of of just some reason for this, but I think we have a planning meeting about what we want to share with the tri board, Josh. Um, add that by this meeting and go from there. Won't be a major budget presentation in December. Be more of just kind of enrollment, some basic, basic pieces of where we are.
So you have that finance the Friday before the twelve nine?
Yep.
So that will probably bring it back to the board.
Right. I just kind of like this one. Yeah, okay. Great. Next call for public audience. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, take care.
Well.
I think Lydia should gather.
We were, I was going to say, we were.
At least make a motion.
Did you give anything to say?
Oh, my goodness, I know, I, I have. I think I've said everything all these years. I'm really without words, which is a reason. I just want to thank you all. I want to thank you, keep up the good work. And I will make the motion. To adjourn this meeting.
Second. Go, Lydia.
For over forty years, S C M has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming, education, and live broadcasts.
S C M isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, S C M faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
S C M receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that S C M remains open.
Continues to educate our youth. And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to S C M, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree. S C M is crucial for keeping our community connected.
S C M isn't just here to broadcast local events. They're actually preserving Sims Berry's history.
Join us. Join us in preserving Sims Berry's voice.
Sims Berry's voice.
Together we can ensure that S C M continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the Q R code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution.
Counts.
Thank you for supporting Sims Berry Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government. Come together.